It's the time of year where the only thread I'm hanging on to is that these are getting longer.
That's all I have. That's all I have.
Whenever you're ready.
All right.
Good. Good evening, everybody. So call this meeting in Buckfield Select Board to order for February eighteenth, twenty twenty five at six thirty three P M. Okay, you have a form tonight, and we will have an executive session later on. Old business, fire department billing restitution ordinance.
All right, so one of the last several months ago, we had discussed this with the fire chief. And I think my memory serves me correctly, the decision that was unofficially made was that if we were gonna do this, we would go the ordinance route instead of a policy route. So I reviewed a ton of different policies, heard the concerns of what people in the audience had brought up, and I drafted what I put in your packet. Thirty thousand foot view. Basically, it covers scene and safety control, traffic accidents, disentanglement and extrication operations from vehicles, fluid and hazardous substance mitigation and traffic accidents, vehicle fires, and hazard mitigation operations. It's focused at building insurance companies and these instances. And it's also explicitly in the ordinance, it states. It's been a few days since I worked with this, so bear with me. Can't find things out for Virginia, but it's it's focused on non-residents of Buckfield, so people driving through town. It's section three, section three first.
Just gonna say, I think I feel like it's not language.
Incidents involving non-residents in the town of Buckfield or upon request of mutual aid from other municipalities. So our residents, our taxpayers wouldn't have worry about being billed for this. This would be those that don't pay taxes in this town. And it would be, it would be billed to the insurance companies. So this is just a draft. You don't have to act on it tonight, but I was, the way I was looking at was we're preparing for annual town meetings. So we're gonna wanna be figuring out if there are ordinances we wanna have them vote on. Cause we're gonna have to schedule a public hearing. We're gonna have to talk about it and then have a warrant article. So I just wanna get this in front of you all before we get too far into the weeds with the budget.
Yeah, I looked it over. I think it looks great. The language that I highlighted myself was in section three. Says the town of Buckfield will seek payment for the cost of services provided by the town of Buckfield Fire Department when responding to incidents involving non-residents in the town of Buckfield or upon request of mutual aid from other municipalities, like Cameron said. And then in section four, it also covers fees for services shall be limited to cost recovery, which I liked that language. And then in the end or end of the first paragraph of section five, the town shall only seek restitution for fire department services from insured individuals or companies. But yeah, I wanna give people a chance to put their their eyes on this. Give their opinion. If we can. I'll move to approve this with or without changes at our meeting on March the second, meeting at March. Is that the eighteenth?
Right, yes.
Okay, so motion to approve with or without changes on the March eighteenth meeting.
Further discussion? Did you have a question, Judy?
She was uncomfortable.
All right, others in favor? Bob, I.
Sally, I.
Peter, I.
Thank you. We get scheduled public hearings thereafter. New business consent agenda.
I will make a motion that we approve the consent agenda.
I'll second that motion. Thank you. Any further discussion? All right, others in favor? Bob, I.
Sally, I.
Peter, I.
The total on that's eighty-three thousand, eight dollars and fifteen cents. Do you wanna go over the five part number of projects? I'd just like to make a note if you don't mind. So I believe I had told you, I wanna apologize. The fire chief had actually submitted this information to me, working through the kinks of the the new setup. I didn't actually get the notification, so I never went to check, but all this information was submitted to me. It was a little late, but after I spoke behind it, it submitted. So I did have all this information on January twenty sixth. And then the next one to do, well, I haven't checked to see if he's telling us something safe. He did go back to work with UPS too, so he's adjusting that thing. A lot of free time to, not so much.
Totally understand.
They've been, they've certainly been busy.
Yeah, they've had a lot of balls. Like, that was just December, from December to December fifth to January twenty sixth, they already responded to forty-one calls. Had two department trainings, one monthly meeting, total of twenty-fourty-two hours. Jesse Hutchinson has been promoted to captain, target target has been promoted to lieutenant. John Roberts, who was the captain, peripherally resigned from the department. And then truck issues. Engine three was, is you'd go to take off down the road and the air horn would just blast. So I believe we fixed that. So I'm sure the neighbors appreciate it. And then truck two was having intermittent heating issues, but the thermostat's been replaced and problems seem to be resolved.
All right, thank you. Approval of the minutes from February fourth, twenty twenty-five, select board meeting.
I'll make a motion to approve the minutes of February fourth, twenty twenty-five, select board meeting.
I'll second.
Thank you. Any discussion? They look good to me. All right, others in favor? Bob, I.
Sally, I.
Peter, I.
All right. Rescue billing rate review. Oh, I missed it. Sorry. My bad. Mailbox policy for the town of Buckfield.
So as with every winner, mailboxes get hit, not on purpose. And nine times out of ten, it's not actually the plow that's hitting the snow, the mailbox, it's the snow that's being pushed. With the snow makings as high as they are, some of them are hard to see, so I'm not saying it doesn't happen. Traditionally, the policy's always been, and state statute backs us up, that mailboxes are are placed there at the owner's risk and that any damage, the town's not liable for it. Some towns have policies where they cover up to a certain amount, sometimes stand by what the statute says. And since I've been here, I've always stuck by what the statute says. It's unfortunate. However, shut that up. Because it, we get a lot of complaints about it. I figured it would make sense to adopt what the state has put out there for municipalities uses a policy. So that is what's in your packet under the, what is it? The mailbox policy for the town of Buckfield. Straight from the state domain's website, it also had a general guidelines from USPS on how to place the mailbox, distances from the edge of the pavement, what to clear during a storm to hopefully prevent any damage to a mailbox. But I think having it in writing on our website is the best way to address some of it. People are still gonna be angry if something happens, and I understand that, but what a lot of people don't realize is that where most days mailboxes are placed is in the the right away. And if they put anything like a granite base to a mailbox and it damages our plow, they're liable for the damage to our plow. So this kind of outlines that a little bit further, and that's where we're at, and that's why I put it in there.
So procedurally, things really changing here. We're just adding some language to our website that'll be available for everyone to access.
We're essentially officially adopting a policy that I've always been under the impression is the town office policy. So at least this way it's official and
and clear.
And clear.
Yeah.
I'm about to ask you to mute these curves. Thanks.
All right, well, once again, I looked it over. Everything looks pretty run-of-the-mill to me, like you mentioned, straight off the Mean Gov website. I'll do the same with the other ordinance and make a motion to approve with or without changes at the March eighteenth meeting.
Doing this as an ordinance or a policy? It's just a policy.
It's policy, but give people the time to react, to see it up on the website.
So a lot of this is actually the the bulk of it is actually on our public works page, just for information. So it hasn't been out there for a while.
Yeah.
I just didn't have, I didn't bring it to the select board.
So you're here just seeking to have the policy approved so that it's
official. It's not just me saying that.
Right, it's right from the state.
Literally, it actually is a template that comes from the state, and it says mailbox policy from municipality of blank. I just changed municipality of the town of Buckfield.
All right, so did we second that or?
No, second.
No second yet?
I'll second that.
Okay. Further discussion? Do we need to wait or can we do it now?
You guys can vote now?
Yeah, I'm okay with moving ahead with it.
Yeah.
Yeah, sooner than later. What you like?
I will rescind.
Thank you.
Yeah.
So wanna vote now?
Whatever it may be.
So the motion's been rescinded and
I'll make a motion that we accept the loss policy from the town of Buckfield.
I'll send you that motion. Further discussion?
You're good.
All right, all those in favor? Bob, I.
Sally, I.
Peter, I.
And a special note for rescue workers. I know it almost says four inch letters, but yeah. The bigger, the bigger number you put on there, the better. Just saying.
Yep.
Reflectives help too. Yes, yes. All right. Now, rescue billing rate review. I assume that you spoke with Matta Fili on this and may
Yeah, this this came up from two things during the audit when they asked to see the policy, and I brought it to him. And they said, these rates are way updated, and I realized it hadn't been updated since twenty fourteen. So I had talked to Sean last year, and we, I didn't bring anything to you guys, and we kept the rates the way where they were at. We are allowed to increase them by five percent. As you know, the cost of everything's going up and so what is incorporated into this policy, if you look under rates, all those, all that information, the flat rate for VLS transport is nine forty-five. ALS transport is eleven fifty-five, so on and so forth. Those are the recommended rates which are on page three from medical reimbursement services. He shows the current rate, the recommended rate, and then obviously the two hundred percent Medicare rate. So this is kind of a two-parter. It is accepting the rates and then in in sense updating the policy to match the current rates. Even if we didn't increase the rates, we'd still have to amend the policy because it's, the current one is, I mean, I think they visit like two forty-five.
Yeah.
Hasn't been that for a long, long time. So technically, when the rates were increased in twenty twenty-two before I took over, the policy wasn't amended. So the auditors want to see our policy match.
Yeah. And they only let you go a fraction?
The the way it's worded is in the law. It says if you're contracted with an insurance company, you'll receive two hundred percent of the Medicare allowed amount of the service. It also states if you're under the two hundred percent, you cannot increase your rates more than five percent each year. So that's Sean's feeling was sticking to the five percent was just, wouldn't make sense.
From Nancy, I'd say these are pretty reasonable.
Should we add language that says that we should revisit this policy and update every so often?
Put in a a blurb for amendments and say that it'll be reviewed at least annually. Even if it's just, yeah, everything was good and just continuing a room. And then, oh, actually, there was one other change I wanted to mention to you guys, cause I didn't want, I almost sneak it in there and have we so after talking to the chief and the billing company, so we don't, we don't charge for sign-offs. We, you know, somebody causing it, your neighbor calls the ambulance, they show up and you're fine and you sign off. We're not gonna send you a bill for us showing up. However, we do have there are some patients in the communities that we serve that call the service a lot more frequently, and I'm talking like more than five a year for non-emergent things, and then they sign off, so they never receive a bill. In some of our coverage area, that means that our crews are out of town for an hour to two hours, you know, preoccupied, and then we have to call and turn our pace to cover our call if we get one. And then they get the, you know, they get the transport, they get the billing revenue. So we are allowed to cha- to charge a hundred dollars for a sign-off. I'm not looking to do that. What I am looking to do is that if there's a residence that has called for service, that's a non-emergent service, and they refuse transport more than five times in a year, we will send a bill for a hundred dollars. I did add that language in last pair, second to last paragraph in under policy. Says the department shall however, location for non-emergency calls for service without transport if the residence has called for service more than five times in a calendar year without transport. Obviously, our rescue's here to help, but it's taking resources away from not just the other two communities that we serve, but us as well.
Yeah, no, I I completely see the need to do do something like that. Is there a reason you went with five? Is that just kind of like industry standard?
Cause I didn't wanna, I mean, I was trying to be reasonable. At first I thought three, but then I'm like, well, who knows, maybe get accident from kids and then you get there. I I figured five was more of a like, okay, at this point, it's a little excessive and we should be going. So trying to see it from both sides and just call advice in the middle. My intent is not to send bills to people for sign-offs, but Bob's got more experience in this, maybe he has some insight.
My insight's less generous.
Yeah. It's like five, you know, does seem rather excessive, and I was thinking along the same lines as Cam originally thought three, but I also know that some kids just have a knack for calling nine-one-one. Wow, so.
So what I would say is if you go to a residence and do something, right, you're helping them in some fashion. These are typically billable services. Which people carry insurance for. So now you just go there and, you know, a false call, there's just nothing. There's nothing to it, you know, there's no, but if you're doing things, you're lifting people up, you're
So you're sending them oxygen or something.
Yeah, we we do some sort of evaluation on them, you know. Or we get diabetics a lot where things got away from them and we kind of cure the problem right there on the scene. You are using medical supplies and personnel, so which we are charged for.
Of course, yeah, but I mean, specifically the language I'm talking about is the non-emergency calls. Okay, for service without transport. Is there a way that we can add language so that, like the sign-off that Cam mentioned? Like, is, would it be smart for us to change that language to be non-emergency calls with sign-offs instead of for service without transport? Basically, their insurance gets charged if we do service, like I mentioned.
Yeah, what I would say is something like if they were evaluated, it's in fashion. So we're doing vital, we're checking them out.
Yeah, it wasn't just the accidental call. It's like somebody needed something from our emergency crew. Yeah, okay.
But then the the incidentals, you know, cause that happens to
Yeah.
You know.
Yeah, so the original policy. Trying to remember what was going through my head because I was working on this plus that other ordinance. You know, what I was trying to consider was the case of like domestic violence, you know, and somebody else calls the ambulance, they show up. And whoever the victim is, is like, no, I don't need anything. You know what I mean? And it's like, so, you know, sending them a bill for a hundred dollars for a call that they didn't make.
Right.
I don't know, it was just a gray area. So I guess that's where I was thinking along those lines. The original policy was I think it's still in here. The department does not bill for ambulance service for responding to the scene of an emergency and subsequently being canceled or if the patient is not medical assistance. That was in the original policy. And then I added that paragraph, so that's really the direction I was thinking of in that. And that was after speaking with the rescue chief, you know, just somebody else calls nine-one-one, they show up. And you know what I mean? Like, it just doesn't seem right to bill somebody for something they didn't ask for.
Right, that's in there where it says they didn't need emergency medical treatment. And that's what I mean, you did something.
Yeah.
Okay, but I I understand where you're coming from, like, you know, where there's like a law enforcement thing, it may we shot a few and called them.
Yeah, we were there. Yeah, exactly. We're there to do a a check on somebody because of domestic violence and, yeah, that's kind of a different too, you know.
Yeah.
Yeah.
Correct.
Yeah, I guess I see where you're coming. That's another side of it.
Right, so, you know, that that's how I would kind of separate it out, you know, like we did something, that's the
Yeah.
Yeah.
Services were provided.
Yeah.
Materials were used.
So would you like to until I can come up with the verbiage for this?
Yeah.
Strike that paragraph that I put in there. Adopt the policy with the new grades.
Yep.
And then I'll bring you another policy with new verbiage for that section later on that we can review.
Yeah, and I'll I'll poke around too and see what other people are using. This is a very common.
Yeah.
It it used to not be where we would just go out and provide these services, but it takes up so much time and resources now to just go to a home and lift people off the floor. I mean, it sounds somewhat heartless, but it's true. You know, we're we're there for a long time on these calls, so. And and it is coverable, so.
Yeah.
The alternative is home health, right? We with EMS has really become a social service these days, so. And it's expensive. Yes.
So just pretend that paragraph isn't there for the sake of this.
So do we have a motion already?
Uh, no, Bob asked me a question. I answered it.
Make a motion that we approve the this updated town of Buckfield Rescue Department ambulance service billing policy. Striking two, three, paragraph four under policy. End of motion.
Second then. Any further discussion? All right, all in favor? Bob, I.
Sally, I.
Peter, I.
Peter, I.
Thank you.
Well, if you deduct the policy, the rates are all in it, so I guess that was too burdensome.
Good job. Nice.
Oh, and when you change that, if you could update the language to also say that this will be checked in every year, if you have a law.
See, I made a note of it.
All right, potential ordinance development discussion. Property maintenance and unnecessary noise. It's been a hot topic.
It has. So I put these in as a discussion item just to get the board talking about it. I know Peter's heard a lot. I don't know if you all have heard a lot. I hear a lot, everything from property maintenance to noise. And we're not talking like, you know, normal, everyday noise, having a get-together or barbecue. We're talking like cannons going off at two in the morning or five in the morning or eleven at night.
All day Tannerate shooting.
And I think the 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 big gist of what people are looking for is like a quiet time between like ten and seven to be able to sleep. I personally don't like having a million ordinances. I think if we were to look at establishing unnecessary noise ordinance, it would take some communication with Oxford County Sheriff's Department because we don't have, we don't have police department, so we would have to figure out what that would entail cost-wise for them to enforce those municipal ordinance. I already sent an email to Amanda back yet, married back from the administrative assistance, so she was gonna pass it along, but just trying to do some research from the get-go. And then the property maintenance ordinance, obviously. I've gotten a number of complaints about a handful of properties in town and you know, the the state's junkyard laws are, they're there, but they're very hard to go after. It is possible, you you get a court order, they get an order to clean it up, they don't clean it up. Now the town's on the hook for cleaning it up, then you can leave the property, but most of the time, so. I found the one that Menzlo adopted a while back, which is centered a lot towards like the the village area of the town, which seems to be where the majority of these complaints came from. I don't know if I so much agree with the the grass length thing, but I mean, it is in there.
Like HOA.
Yeah.
Right.
But that's why I gave you other But that's why I gave you other towns' policies, I mean ordinances, so you can see what's out there. Um, one thing that I did like about their ordinance from what I read in. I don't know if it was in the ordinance or if it was in a news article that I read about it was that. It's not something that code enforcement is gonna go out and just start citing people for. There has to be a legitimate complaint that comes in and then they, that would trigger them to go out and look at it. So it's not like code enforcement's gonna be cruising around writing violations for everybody, there's, there's a process to it, but. Those are the two big ones that I've got a lot of requests about, um, I've been asking people to. Try and be part of the solution and help draft these and I haven't gotten any help, so. I figured I'd at least do some preliminary research and if it comes down to me, working with the attorney and drafting something up for us to look at, that's good, but. I think those are two areas that town's gonna have to address at some point.
Yeah, I absolutely agree, I've heard that some fact over and over again, um, I'm wondering, so. If, uh, if this were enacted, um. What would the process look like for recourse, is it, the town reaches out with a certified mail? informs them of a need to clean up, I imagine, can you go through that?
Yeah, so different, different ordinances have different requirements, the, the way I would see it is that there'd be a complaint. Code enforcement would be contacted, code enforcement would go out and investigate, see if it violates the ordinance, they issue a written. You know, um, a written letter that basically says, hey, you have X amount of days to. Clean this up or fix this or do this or whatever the issue is of violation. Um, after so many days, I think some at seven, some at fourteen, depending on the situation, maybe it's thirty days, uh. Then they would receive a certified letter. And then if it's still not taken care of, at that point, the town would have to take them to court.
Yeah.
And give the court order saying that. If it's not taken care of, we can do it, uh, but there would obviously be fines after a certain amount of time, I think, uh, the Winslow one was. Fifty to two hundred and fifty dollars and every day is a separate offense, so it's, I mean, it's got some teeth into it. What that would look like for legal fees. I don't know. Um, but I just know that like, right now, we're kind of, all we have is state law and. You know, I'm all for, it's your land, do what you want, but when it starts. Bringing down people's property value, when they're trying to sell their homes or deterring businesses or. Potential residents from moving to town, um, it's hurting all of us, so. It's, it's now become a, a town issue and then, you know, I'm the guy that has to tell them that's nothing we can really do about it. And unfortunately, I mean, there are other things that we could do with the junkyard stuff, again, you could take, you know, we could go through the whole process, take the pictures, bring it to the attorney. Take it to court, but our legal budget currently for the full year is six thousand dollars.
Yeah.
That it's gone with one, one issue and that doesn't even account for what it would cost us to clean something up if they're unable to. So.
Yes, um, I know we're gonna talk about the budget a little bit later tonight, but. Are in the next year, are, is there already any plans to increase the legal budget or?
Yeah, I've put increases in for legal as well as code enforcement, because if, if we're gonna start pursuing this.
Yeah.
We gotta be able to pay for it.
Yep, absolutely.
So that was the purpose of that, and I wanna put it front center, um, we can call this the parking lot item, but. I don't wanna rush into something, but I think people have been frustrated long enough, I mean, I've been here for three years and some of this, some of these complaints, I mean, they're not. They're not invalid.
Hmm.
Um, I, I mean, I don't live in center of town, so, I don't, I, you know, so you look at it like some people do, but. You get to have a cannon fly, though. Yes.
Center of town's bad, it's like. I, I know the ones that always catch my eye going by or right in the center of town, I roll into our cute little village and then I. Look to the left and I look to the right and I'm like, oh.
There's not one direction into the center of town, you can't go with it.
Oh, you mean like dirt? Yeah, yeah, always. Yeah, a lot.
But I get it, you know, people are frustrated, you know, some of the, the unnecessary noise ordinances, I think Rangeley's um. Discussed it a little bit too was. Oxford County Sheriff, I believe, has been called, animal control has been called numerous times about somebody's dog that has been barking relentlessly outside. And I get it, it's hard to control a dog, but as a dog owner, you know, if the dog's outside on leash barking for an hour and a half straight. Um, bring it in the house, so. I think in there it specifies that if a dog barks continuously for thirty minutes or more, you're in violation of the ordinance. Which I think is reasonable, I mean, dogs are gonna bark, if they're barking for thirty minutes straight, there's something that needs to be addressed.
Yeah.
Um, you know, different people work different hours, some people work nights, they're out there and they're listening to a dog barking, they can't sleep. So, I, you know, those are just little things that. I get regular complaints about. If people want to pursue it, they need to get behind it.
Well, I think it's a great idea to put this in front of the voters, because obviously we've heard so much feedback about it. And I share those same concerns, like, of course, you don't, you know, wanna. The government to tell you what to do on your property, but at the end of the day, there are certain things where it's like, we live in a community. It's not just about your property line, this sort of thing supersede.
We wrote, wrote hard version, that's a big complaint, we've received especially in the village area, you know, like, stuff like that. Is, is important to people that live next door and have to deal with it.
Absolutely.
Like I said, I think the grass height thing.
Double measure risk.
And there's does have a, a thing about composting in there, but it's just, it, it's. Based off the setbacks that are required by the building for ordinance anyways.
Hmm.
Um. Yeah, this one brings it down, uh, shall note, the CEO shall notice by the violator serving a written notice by certified mail or by hand delivery. Said notice shall explain the nature of the violation and require corrective action within seven to thirty calendar days. Um, for help and safety violations, corrective action must be taken within seven days. Uh, the violator may appeal any violation of the Board of Appeals, if we go that route, really have to do a better job of finding the Board of Appeals because I don't have anybody in Board of Appeals.
Yeah.
Um, and then if it's not corrected within the time allowed, the town may pursue all relief available, so that would be court and the relief includes a total of one hundred. Twenty five hundred dollars per occurrence and then it's each day, yeah.
Yeah.
The vehicle thing is really hard to. Figure out around here, is there like a, a legal thing of how many unexpected vehicles you didn't have?
So that's in state, that's in state statute and it's, it's, you can't have one free.
Three.
Or I think the third one might trigger it, however, if it's inspected. They can have a million of them, if it's registered but not inspected, which is funny because you. Can have tires.
Me, that's.
Yeah.
But, um, those are, in those situations, talking to the town's attorney. You know, that requires code enforcement visiting the site, taking pictures of the front and back of every vehicle on the property. Um, and, cause if he goes to court, he wants to be able to prove that, hey, these aren't registered, there's this X amount of vehicles, um, and it, it can get tricky. Okay, current enforcement's not law enforcement, so.
Right.
It can get a little hairy in some situations, but, um. The biggest thing with that is the, the legal costs, you know, talking to Jamie at, at the law firm. He said, you know, on average, he threw out an estimate, going after one of those. What they constitute illegal junkyards and it's not just restricted to cars, it can be furniture or whatever, like, um. Could run the town about thirty five hundred dollars in legal fees and that's if it's not like challenged every step of the way. So I mean, two of those, that goes in our legal budget. So that's what we've been against, that's really why I don't see nothing's been done, I mean, we have sent code enforcement officers uh, or. The code enforcement officer out, he has spoken to people, he has asked, and, and it's gotten. Some traction in some instances, but not to the extent that. An ordinance would probably have.
Yeah, it's, it's difficult, even the health, uh, coming out from the health angle, it's like. Unless there's an ordinance to back you up, it has to go to the state, it, it just doesn't go anywhere, it's not.
You know, if they call you, they have to call that, uh, complaining for a health issue, like road or bridge or, you know, whatever. You, you go to residents, you talk, if you can find a resident, you talk to the resident, you ask if you can do an inspection, they say no, you go to, go to court order saying, hey. You're gonna let them in and that's a whole nother process, Dan, I'm not a attorney, so that would involve a town attorney, which. So.
Yep, so how do we wanna do this, you wanna, uh. Try to get it on for the June vote?
If we have time, yes, if not, I mean, we can always have a special town meeting until the rest is. I mean, that's just an open floor, show of hands, but I, I, I think it would be best served if it was in a. In a referendum type setting and give more, because some people don't wanna stand up and be like, yeah, I do want this in a situation like. You know, property maintenance or.
Yeah, there's certainly enough interest in the town to.
Yeah.
If you weld it years on.
The town tried to implement a junkyard policy several years back and it was rejected at open floor town meeting and I don't know if it's rejected. Just because of the lack of participation or, I mean. Again, it's, it hasn't been revisited for close to fifteen years, I don't think. But it wasn't like this fifteen years ago, I don't ever remember Buckfield having as many of these issues. We've always had those properties that everybody just kinda, it is what it is, but they seem to be multiplying.
Yeah. Great.
And if I'm looking to open a business.
So do you wanna have a plan to try to? Develop something for.
I mean, I can put together some drafts. Based off of this and, I mean, if you guys find any other ones you want me to. Look at and try to incorporate or you have other ideas, shoot me an email, but I, I have no problem drafting them, uh. I just don't wanna feel like I'm just doing it without some guidance from you.
No, I'm, I'm, I'll look into more comparable ones from other towns, but this is something that. I personally would definitely be interested in seeing to select work for Zoom.
I don't wanna rush it though, I don't know genius. Too soon with all the budget stuff we have to.
I don't wanna rush it either, I just think we need to start doing.
Yeah, it would be good to try to get feedback as we can, because in us, it's like a hot topic for people and they argue about we should have. The noise ordinance or not.
Hmm.
I've seen that a lot, yeah, on Facebook and stuff.
I mean, you know, I'm all for. Again, when it comes to noise, me as a voter and what I'm thinking of is do what you want on your property. But in the middle of the night.
Respect your neighbors.
Respect your neighbors. I don't wanna tell people, hey, if you got forty acres, fifty acres, hundred acres, you like to shoot your guns, that's great, just don't do it at twelve.
And if someone has a differing perspective, then I think we'd all. Be very open hearing it, but to me, that sounds very reasonable.
Yeah, just wanna draft something and see how it goes.
Yeah, and then like I said, if you guys have any input as I'm working on this that you want me to incorporate or, again, it's all I would do is write a draft, doesn't even. Implementing something until we have, I mean, once something's approved by you, it starts to go to a public hearing, yeah. Before a vote, so it's not like the six of us are gonna make decision for the entire town.
Yeah.
Yeah, and we can get it out on the website, not like just say, this is what we're looking at.
Hmm. Yeah, I think it would be a good idea to, once we have a draft developed, if we could email that out to the email list. It's the usual.
Or like stuck at like seventy to eighty.
Yeah, so about that.
I mean, it's seventy to eighty more people, I haven't sent anything out on it recently, just because there's been a lot going on, but, um. It would be nice if we could get a little bit more engagement.
Mm-hmm.
More engagement costs more money, but.
Yeah.
It's just a good way to get stuff out there.
Yeah. Yeah.
I mean, even if people don't check all their emails, if they see a pop up on their cell phone that pops up in the town of Buckfield, they might check it. And that's the other thing, I don't wanna abuse it to the point where nobody pays attention to it, I only like to send important stuff out.
All right, that sounds like a plan, we don't need to vote on any of that, I don't think. Thank you very much, all had together. All right, twenty twenty five, twenty twenty six, proposed budget.
All right, so like I promised, I said I'd deliver this to you on the eighteenth. And then we set the three workshops, so, uh, I talked to the department heads and the plan is to start going over it, um. In, on the fourth.
Yep.
Uh, I won't be able to be here on the one on the Saturday because of softball, but I'll try to get everything. Explained and out there as I can on the fourth and then I'll obviously be there at one. Six, Thursday, uh, it's, it's during the work day, but, uh. Basically, what we're looking at is I drafted a letter so you can kinda sit, you know, see the, the big things, um. Obviously, the cost of everything isn't going down, um, there's a lot unknowns as far as. Prices, uh, there's a lot of new things that we have to, um, take into consideration. If you look at rescue, for example, you know, uh, we, we're now responsible for paying for all of our, our medical stuff. That we never used to pay for before, the hospital used to supply that, um, supplies. Tell you, the majority of it we come from, but. The costs haven't gone down, so that's in there, um, insurance, I don't know insurance is gonna land, last year with a double digit increase. I think I budgeted for. Ten.
Hmm.
Maybe twelve and a half, I can't remember, um, so is that where it's gonna be, I might be able to adjust that number later on, but I mean, that's a, you're talking a very minute. Um, part of the budget there. I have proposed some changes for the full time employees as far as, uh, what the town provides for medical insurance coverage. Because I sent up feelers to other towns, um, because I noticed like, whenever we had a job posting, we were losing good, good people and what if. Equates to us, uh. Better health insurance options at other towns, um. So when I got back, I think I got six responses from six different towns, um, kinda landed where I was expecting. I didn't propose what, what I was expecting, which was, um, a lot of towns are going to a hundred percent individual, eighty percent family. Um, family plans at eighty percent is astronomically high. Uh, so what I put into this budget and what I proposed was ninety percent individual and, uh. I think I went with seventy percent, yeah, seventy percent for employee and children. Um, and then keep the employee and family the same, because in today's world, most, most families, and I know it's not fair, it's not like that everywhere, but. Um, a lot of families have two working parents or, you know, so if the spouse needs it, they typically have a job that would offer their insurance. I know when I worked in the corporate world, if I wanted to add my wife and they, and her company offered insurance, I had to pay considerably more than what the. The premium was for a family because of that, um. So I kinda had to compromise, you know, the single per, single person with children, you know. That, that's something that children can help of, maybe it'll attract somebody that has kids, younger people, you know, because I'm just losing too many candidates to. Hundred percent health insurance, uh, I don't think, I don't think right now in town, I'm looking for a hundred percent health insurance for their full time employees, so. For you, ninety percent was a compromise, we currently pay for eighty.
Yeah.
What else? We discussed, uh, getting the town of Buckfield more in line at the fiftieth percentile on wages. One, two of the areas, two of the departments that we didn't make any considerable changes was fire rescue. Firefighters, it's not like when I was a kid, you know, having to come in for free or have a stipend or, I mean, we've been paying a minimum wage. Yes, minimum wage keeps going up, but it, it's. For the amount of training that they have to do and to be able to recruit people that can come in here and will respond to those calls. We gotta look at that, so fire department wage budget didn't go up considerably, but it's based around a pay structure that makes sense. We gotta look at that, so fire department wage budget didn't go up considerably, but it's based around a pay structure that makes sense. Uh and then rescues proposing wage increases that align with the services, because. Let's face it, everybody that we employ is employed by somebody else and. Um this is their job. We're not saying that Buckfield's their full-time job, but it's a portion of their overall income. And in order to get those shifts covered and make sure that we are providing the service that that people need, we have to pay them to be here, so. So I'm sure that'll be a topic of discussion that's in there, but it's it's in line with neighboring services.
All right, and really, that's what you have to do, just like the municipal center here, you know, your administration, if you're not competing with the. Surrounding the area, you're gonna lose votes, you know, you have to be. In there, you have, it's somewhere close by.
Well, it's, it's not the service that we have, I mean, the the service is great, don't get me wrong, people we have, the providers we have, they're amazing. They do awesome work, and I appreciate everything that they do, but we don't have the local providers that we used to, and. No matter which way you try to. Cook this chicken, it's great. You know, you hear the people that are like, well, we should look at options for contracting with a service and having them provide us. So that's, that's great, but. I don't think you're gonna find that service, and if you do, you'll find that service, and 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 what we'll find is. If we're lucky enough to save any money. It would be so unnoticedable to the taxpayers. Because all the revenue that is coming in from that is gone, so that's not reducing that cost anymore. Uh and I I'm saying that when they did the feeler or put the feelers out there a few years back. What they were proposing for pricing is more than what this service actually costs this town now, means years ago, so. And it's gotten worse, there's lost providers, so. People are stretched thin, I mean, Bob over at North Star, you guys are all over the place and. I have, I mean. I. It's not unheard of that Buckfield doesn't go and cover a policy case once in a while, so, but I mean. Yet effects not just Buckfield, everybody's. So there's that um in the proposed budget copy that I gave you, again, school county. No projections, I won't know, um. I put five percent increase in for both of them, I can almost guarantee you that is not where they're gonna land. The school was over eleven point one, yeah, and county was twenty five. So with that said. And I put it in my letter, and if the city can find it really quick, we need to strongly encourage people. To attend the school board meetings, especially the annual budget meeting, which is gonna be held on.
Yeah. The the meeting is scheduled to be held at Mountain Valley High School in the auditorium on May twenty eighth at six thirty. Um and then the Zinskip Region Budget Informational Meeting will take place at the BJSHS Auditorium on May nineteenth at six thirty.
So that's what's on the current schedule. I know Free Town sent a letter to the school board last year about. Moving locations, I don't anticipate they're gonna move that location, I'm sure it will be at Mountain Valley High School, and I know that's a drive. But that annual town meeting or that annual budget meeting is where whoever shows up gets to vote on the final budget that we're all gonna vote on on June tenth. And if. That budget ends up considerably high, that is gonna have a huge impact on our property taxes, no matter what we do with the municipal budget. And I would really like to see more people from Buckfield attending these meetings and being aware of what's going on. Yeah, that's my little toot my horn on that, um because obviously, those are the two areas that we just do not have as much control of. Oh uh uh over, um and that's the one night where if something does look off and people wanna make changes, that would be the time to do it. Outside of that, I can't think of anything right off the top of my head, I'm sure you will all come up with all your questions. Before the three workshops that we have, um it's posted on our website. I'll put a Facebook post up on the budget committee page, because it's where the budget stuff is, if I was looking for budget stuff. But I'll put a link on the Facebook to it, so people can review it before the fourth, so they can have their questions when they come to that workshop. Yeah, uh we don't have any debt service items that we're asking for. I know last year I told you that we were looking to replace one of the trucks. I talked to, and we've put a lot of money into our trucks this year, um. I feel like we're more proactive with the preventative maintenance now than we have been in years past, primarily just because of budgets. But what we'd like to do is continue to maintain the trucks that we have and keep them in good running order. Next year, we may. That's probably, I I can't get that can down the road, but um one of our older trucks needs to go. And uh when we're fully staffed, we have some, we need, we need trucks that we're gonna operate. Uh we've had a lot of breakdowns this year, I'm hoping next year it won't be like that, but every winter surprises me and everything seems to break every storm. So I haven't asked for anything there, um as far as. Capital planning, I did in the municipal center line, I did put ten thousand dollars to go into the municipal center capital improvement. Account, um. County office, we've replaced the roof, we've done a lot of work inside. Flooring in the town office, I mean, I've meant to do that for the last two years, and then we had. Flooded and everything else, and I've had to spend it on other things, so those, that carpeting needs to be done, the walls need to be done. Some ceilings need to be taken care of, the exterior needs to be painted, the sign needs to come down and be restored or replaced because it's in rough shape. Parking lot, the curbing, curbing was bad to begin with, it's broken in a lot of places, I need to look at. Doing uh curbing in certain areas, replacing it, I, some of that work we could probably do in-house, rent the equipment and do it, but. Kinda, it all costs money, um. So that's the only. Reserve account appropriation I asked for, um. The chief didn't give me any, but to be honest with you, with the budget, it's it's really hard to do capital asset or capital improvement planning. Because it costs us a lot of money, it's hard, and I know Buckfield has a history of waiting until we need something and financing everything, and it drives people crazy. But um I had done a preliminary capital improvement plan on all the equipment. The expected life expectancy of all of our equipment, when it would need to be replaced, and if we started it today, how much we would have to contribute. Each year for each thing, and it was over a million dollars. To get caught up, you know what I mean, to catch up with the life cycle, and that's just adding a million dollars to the budget is just insanity, so. When we need to replace some of these big ticket items, it's probably gonna come down to. Financing them. Some people have different views on it, they don't like to have money sitting in the bank, but. It sucks when you get that forty, fifty thousand dollar hit every year for the next five to ten years. I tried to be as reasonable as I could, I think when I originally looked at it, I ended up. Yeah, the overall municipal budget over last year was like a eight point six percent increase. But one of the things we're gonna get hit with this year is municipal revenue sharing projections are down a hundred thousand, so no matter what I did, unless I cut a hundred thousand, I was never gonna keep. Where it was supposed to be. The frustrating process.
Yeah, and this will accounting here just. You know, yeah, yeah.
All right, and and county gave us, gave us an amount, and then after I uploaded everything into the system. They sent me a letter that said they were wrong, they miscalculated, so you'll notice that there's a note next to the county budget that says it's like nine thousand, some change. More than it's supposed to be, um and that's why it's in the system like that, cause I can't go back and change the budget after it's been. Imported in the system. So. And if we're looking at noise ordinances and having Oxford County, you know, at least enforce that, I'm sure there's gonna be a dollar figure on that. So. If it doesn't happen this year, and it happens the following year, there'll probably be an extra expense to county that we'll have to. Inevitably budget for.
Yeah.
Wish I could give you more good news, but. I mean, we've been, this is my what, between the board and here, this is my fourth budget with the town, um. I think for the last three years, we've done a really good job. Yeah, unfortunately, I just, we can't. Without cutting services or or. Getting rid of people, and I mean, with the amount of complaints we get on roads.
Yep.
At in its current state, I used last or last year's. Numbers, as far as values and stuff, to try and come up with an estimated mill rate. And again, this is an estimate, because I'm using last year's information, it's not in that, but um. With no fund bounce appropriation, it would be a mill rate of fifteen point eight. For the two hundred thousand dollar appropriation, it would be fifteen, and if you wiped out all the paving, we'd be at thirteen ten. So.
Dirt roads it is.
Hmm, as you know, suggesting that, I'm just saying, to give you, take. It's the biggest thing in one line item that I could pull out, and I pulled it out, and it came into that vicinity of thirteen tent, so. Even wiping out all our paving. I mean, we'd still be higher than last year.
Yeah. Everything costs more.
Yeah, um you know.
Still cheap for the minutes.
My chickens aren't laying. So yeah, that's, that's the big items on it, um I'm sure you'll come up with more questions, but.
Well, thank you.
You're welcome, we'll look it over, happy reading.
Yeah, thank you.
Making notes.
Regarding the um. Meeting at Mountain Valley High School. Would we be able to, if there was sufficient interest, like explore chartering a. Small bus or something to help encourage people to get over there? If it's transportation or driving at night, that's their issue.
Never say never, we could probably figure, we could probably look into it.
Okay, just cool with, yeah. Yeah, I think that would be worth.
That is a good suggestion to the RSU.
Yeah.
If you don't wanna meet here.
Anything else on the budget?
Um it's gonna be on the website, I assume. It's already there, uh it's under the budget committee, yeah, so. I didn't post it on Facebook yet, but if you go to boards and committees, since the town is the budget committee this year. It's right, it says twenty twenty five, twenty twenty six proposed budget, version one.
Right. Link on Facebook, for the folks without Facebook, just go to buckfield main dot gov. Um select the boards and committees menu and click budget committee. And it will be under twenty twenty five to twenty twenty six proposed budget version one.
All right, other business? Anyone have any other business?
Just like to say, great job to our public works crew, cause they have. Long Sunday into Monday, I think they all had forty hours at the beginning of today, so. Um I know it may seem like we're not doing things fast enough or things aren't getting done as quickly as we'd like. But those guys are working nonstop, and I appreciate everything for everyone.
Yeah, that was a long heart storm right there.
The wind drifts have been outrageous. North Buckfield, Paris Hill, up on North Hill, I mean, they go through, they clear it up, an hour later, it's back, they just, they can't catch a break. Fortunately, it sounds like the wind subsided and. We're over that, huh, but we understand, I mean, we tried to do side walks, everything's just frozen solid.
Yeah.
I mean, the snow isn't snow, it's ice. Uh and we're on other places to put it, Preston and his crew are gonna, you know, use the loader and try and move some of it, but. There's just, we got a lot right quick.
Yeah.
Supposed to warm up, so. I'm hoping things will get better.
Are we still hiring position at Public Works?
Yeah, I still have a full-time position open.
Just one.
You are aware of a, there's a culvert on Old Summer Road that's freezing, the 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 culvert appears to be completely frozen. I've received numerous calls about it, we've got signs and cones up right now. Kind of limited to what we can do to fix it, Preston has some ideas, but um. For some reason, there's a lot of water coming from somewhere up on, off of Willie's Way, and I don't know where it's coming from, but it's filling the ditches, the pulver's now completely frozen. It's gotta freeze it over the road, so. It's, yeah, it's, there's water bubbling up from somewhere, I just don't know where it's coming from.
So, have we, cause I know we've talked a lot about, you know, uh keeping rates competitive for, especially the. Fire rescue department, but have we done the same for that open position? Are the rates pretty competitive for the area?
So because we were, because we were uh down a guy for majority, the majority of all this year, uh I uh. I implemented a pay structure change with them already, so we, we have gotten there with public works and all I've asked for in. I I factored that into my budget based off what they're currently making, um. Everybody except for those two departments that I talked about. And library subs, we're we're classifying them as library aides now, so not really subs, they actually come in, they work for issues, but. Uh library aides, uh I moved them up from, my recommendation was up from minimum wage to a little bit more than that, and then uh. Fire and rescue, obviously, I explained that, everybody else, the only thing I've recommended, and everybody's been on page with me, is a two and a half percent. Cola, which matches the social security increase.
Yeah.
It's lower than inflation, but I I understand that I did a lot of adjustments over the last year and a half,ish two years, so. Um I figured the two and a half percent was was reasonable, but I feel comfortable where everybody else is at this point.
Yeah.
For now, as long as nothing changes, um you know, we're fully staffed everywhere else, so. That's where I'm at on on those, so public works, yes, I'm comfortable with it, I feel we're, we're at a fair, a fair wage for our, our town size.
Yeah.
Obviously, working in construction, they could make more money, but for people that wanna work for municipalities, it's. If it were. We may not be the most competitive, but. We're not the most, the most, or the least paid. But we'll get a lot more done than one more.
All right, any other other business? Public comment? Nope, all right. So I'll make a motion, we go into executive session, suit to one M R S A subsection four oh five six F. Uh to discuss poverty or property abatement. Uh P A two oh two four dash two oh two five one dot twenty two dot twenty five.
I will second that motion.
Hey, discussion, all those in favor, bye bye. All right, and we'll be back after.
Alright, you're gonna go.
Alright, we've come out of an executive session at seven fifty two P M.
I will make a motion to deny poverty abatement P A twenty twenty four dash twenty twenty five one point twenty two point twenty five.
Any discussion? All those in favor, bye-bye.
Sally, hi.
You're right.
Thank you. That's it for our business. I'll make a motion that we adjourn at eight fifty three P M or seven fifty three P M, sorry. All in favor, bye-bye.
Sally, hi.
You're right.
Thanks.